Good evening. I'd like to call the Board of Selectmen to order, October 3rd, 2022. We have Ed Neal, Essex resident and former selectman. Please join us. And Ed, you'll have to talk kind of close to the microphone so everyone can hear you.
Okay. Thank you. Can you, is that working?
No.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity to make my voice heard. I'd like to speak about the current controversy relative to the improvement of Apple Street. As early as the 1940s, the town of Essex recognized the importance of Apple Street as an alternative route to South Essex. The regular storm-related flooding of the causeway Route 133, as well as the insubstantial nature of the causeway bridge convinced the town fathers of the importance of widening Apple Street and improving the bridge at the Alwif Brook. In August 1947, the town petitioned the Essex County Commissioners, who at the time had jurisdiction over county roads, that the existing situation at Apple Street is, quote, "unsuited to the present requirements of traffic, that the lines are indefinite, and that common convenience and necessity require that the same be laid out, altered, or relocated, and that specific repairs be made thereon, and that a new bridge at Western Ave be constructed." Said petition was granted on May 24th, 1949, and construction was ordered. In approving the project, the Commissioners included the requirement that, end quote, "and the petition, as so far as it relates to other portions of Apple Street not covered by this alteration, is left open to further action, and said road shall be known as a public highway forever." Clearly, it was the intention of both town and county officials to ensure that Apple Street was a reliable, convenient alternative over the Essex River, and to maintain that status as a public highway forever, and to conduct other necessary improvements on other areas of Apple Street not covered by this alteration in the future. Now, over 70 years later, we find ourselves in the situation that major storm events caused significant flooding in two areas on the southern end of Apple adjacent to Southern Ave. Scientists have predicted that these events will increase in number and intensity over time. The flooding has not yet made Apple completely impassable to our public safety and DPW trucks, but police cruisers should not be required to attempt to flood, to ford the flood, nor should our valuable equipment be subjected to being partially submerged in the salty, tidal floodwaters. Fortunately, the potential impacts of global warming have prompted our federal and state governments to create grant funds available to local governments to mitigate these impacts. Our town administrator at the behest of the Board of Selectmen has diligently followed the grant approval process and may be in the final stages of achieving almost complete funding for mitigation of our flooding issues on Apple Street. These measures would include installing a new, larger culvert pipe in one location and raising the roadbed in another area. Raising the roadbed would require modest widening in order to avoid steep bankings on either side. Some trees will need to be removed, and some stone walls may need to be moved back away from the road. In the 1970s, the town voted to designate Apple Street as a scenic byway. This designation does not prohibit maintenance or improvements to the road, just requires a public hearing in front of the planning board before changes are made. Unfortunately, it seems some residents are opposed to approving Apple Street. I would like to remind everyone that the purpose of our road system is to provide for safe transport of goods, services, and people from one part of town to the other. If the views along the way are scenic, more the better, but scenic or rustic beauty must not impede the important function this road serves. I strongly support the Selectmen's work to accomplish this important project. I see it as a vital public safety issue. We need to facilitate the free movement of our public safety personnel and vehicles anywhere, at any time, regardless of tides or weather. Safety should always trump aesthetics. I would remind those opposed that Apple Street has been evolving on its own, becoming more overgrown. A ride down Apple Street and looking at the roadside, it's clear to see that with few exceptions, the trees in question are young, new growth. Most of them are less than a foot in diameter. Old photographs of Essex show that at one time, the populated areas were practically devoid of trees. They had been chopped down to build houses, ships, or to clear farmland for food production. Removing the trees necessary to improve Apple will not substantially alter the rural appearance of Apple Street. If a stone wall is moved back, there will still be a wall in place, and over time, we will forget its original location. Please forge ahead with this necessary project, use the available grant funds, and save our heirs from dealing with this problem at a later date with their own funds, respectfully. And can I add a little addendum to that?
Certainly may.
It has been suggested that a simple, no-cost solution to Apple Street flooding is to station some of our public safety equipment and personnel in South Essex until the flooding survives, subsides. This proposal demonstrates a complete misunderstanding, and I'm sure unintentional disrespect for how our emergency personnel operate. Our call-first responders all have full-time jobs in addition to their service of the town. When the alarm sounds, and you never know when that will happen, they respond to the scene or to the station. Some of the responders may have just completed a full shift at their regular job or been awakened from a restful sleep by the call. During an emergency, the adrenaline flows, and they perform above and beyond normal human expectations to serve us. But from the time they leave their home, their endurance and stamina diminishes. We just spent millions of dollars on a state-of-the-art facility in order to protect our equipment from the weather and to provide our personnel with the necessities to address any situation, including sleeper, sleeping and shower facilities in case they need to be on-site for an extended period of time. To send our vehicles and valuable personnel resources out in the nastiest and extreme weather to wait in South Essex in anticipation of an emergency event is an unacceptable imposition on our staff and will result in gratuitous degradation of our valuable equipment. You cannot sleep in the cabs of our trucks, and stationing the men in the trucks anywhere will degrade their ability to respond in a robust manner. This po, oh, excuse me. This policy would render our expenditure on the new station a waste. We have an obligation to main our transportation system as well as provide public safety services. Please fix Apple Street.
Thank you so much, Ed.
Thank you.
Does the Board have any questions or comments? No?
No, thank you, Ed.
Thank you for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask the Board of Public Works and Superintendent Galley to join us at the table. We're going to have to share some microphones, and you may need to speak closely for everyone to be able to hear. Thank you all for joining us this evening.
So, thank you, everyone, for coming. You may know by now that we did have the chance to talk to the current solid waste contractor, which is Covanta, recently. And we've learned that they are willing to extend the existing agreement by six months. That gets us to the fiscal year boundary that we need to be at. This project, this contract is out of phase with our fiscal year. It also gives us the time we need to work with the fall town meeting in November, get all of the equipment and upgrades, the money for those, at the town meeting, and then have all of that in place by the time you determine who the next operator will be. Could be Covanta still. It could be perhaps Casella. It could be someone else. But there'll be six more months to work that out, and whoever comes in will be coming into a station that is fully maintained and at full operation because of the replacement of some of the equipment. And so, it seems that it would make sense at this point in time to take them up on this offer. I can tell you that one thing we know is that the tipping fee, and we knew this already, is going to sharply increase from 71, 76 to 93 and change, which is still a fairly good rate, 93.60. We were quoted recently higher than 100, as you know. And so, that additional cost, we knew that that was coming. They also are not willing to continue to do maintenance on our station, but that's understandable since the equipment there is from, what, 1985, Mike?
1985.
So, it would require the town to go on its own with respect to maintaining the equipment. If there's a breakdown in the six months, which won't be six months, right, because there'll be hopefully a vote to replace equipment, there will be a lead time to get the equipment in, and then there's probably a two-day for an install. So hopefully, within just a few months, the station will be operating, and there won't be a lot of need for maintenance, at least in the early years. And so, I guess that's an introduction to the current status, and that plays against our, against the backdrop of the end-to-end solution that we already heard about from Casella, which would be, they come in, you pay them one price, and they handle everything, including maintenance, including recyclables, et cetera. But that comes at a premium because you're getting the convenience of that.
Paul, do you want to speak for the Board?
Well, we, the Board hasn't had a chance to review it, review everything together, but we did find that Covanta's recent proposal is much more favorable than the proposal that we got from Casella.
Price-wise?
Price-wise. And we're currently paying $72 plus and minus per tonne to dispose of our acceptable solid waste at the Covanta site in, in Haverhill. The revised proposal from, from Covanta, and this current contract we have expires, it's 20 years old, but the revised proposed prices, I believe it's $94 per tonne, and compared to a pre, other proposal we received, I believe that number was $135 per tonne. So it seems, seems the, the new proposal is quite, quite, quite more favorable compared to other proposals.
I realize that the Board hasn't had an opportunity to take a vote on that, but can I just hear from each Board member that we, that it's, that's generally the consensus that everyone feels that this is the favorable option right now?
Go ahead.
I would certainly agree right now, given the situation, wherein this is certainly the most favorable option we've been presented with. My main concern right now, when we talk about putting things at town meeting, asking for money to rehab equipment and infrastructure that's at the facility, is specific to what we're rehabbing and how we're replacing the infrastructure that is there. So, the idea of having a contract with Covanta to extend it, to give us some more time to kind of figure out what we're doing, that's a good idea, as far as I'm concerned. But I think we need to really seriously consider, when we talk about replacing equipment, making sure that we're replacing equipment in such a way that it is advantageous to the town. If we replace what's there right now, we're kind of stuck with who's hauling our waste. There's not going to be other people who can bid on it. There's one person who can haul our trailers out, and, and that's it. Or maybe we might be able to find somebody else.
And you're right, and I gave some, some thought to that. And I think that if the town meeting is asked to approve up to the amount it would take for the trailer-style compactor, which is the type we have now, and you delay purchasing that until you know which hauler you're going to use in the longer term, then you can purchase that when you know. Because the breakaway compactor, which is a smaller compactor, has the benefit of being more standard for the industry, but it has the disadvantage of having more hauls per week because it's smaller.
And cost-wise?
But you, you could, it's less money to buy one. So if you-
So why are we going to have to buy two of these smaller ones?
Well, so I'll get to that. So, you've got the large one we have now. If town meeting approves the replacement of that outright, and you don't have to do it, then you save some money because you try the, you do the other style. What we're looking at also are two smaller compactors that don't have anything to do with solid waste. They have to do with recycling. One for co-mingled and one for just cardboard, and that will actually help reduce the number of hauls for recycling.
And the hope, I would hope, is that they would be typical to one another, so that you can stock typical spare parts, you can have a service contract with a company that can deal with a single type of compactor. Certainly, we're going to be hauling waste more often, but you also have the ability to potentially bid it out to more companies that can give you a competitive price to haul waste. So, it, it's tough to tell which is the right way to go right now, but, you know-
Is there enough time to go either option by the time you think you need to before July 1st?
In six months.
Yeah.
Certainly more than there is before January 1st.
Yeah, yeah, certainly. But, you know, things are delayed, you know, so I just want to make sure that you know that-
As far as hardware and getting equipment-
We looked at lead times, and I have them here somewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah. When we, when we, I will say, when we, when we all sat down and talked about this, you know, we were really trying to come to a good conclusion and an option as a board, but it was difficult, right, to figure out what was the right way to go. And we, none of us wanted to kind of kick the can down the road, but at the same time, you know, having the ability to get on the fiscal year, buy ourselves another six months, maybe get more potential bidders involved, seemed like-
When, when would we have to make the decision by, to be going by July 1st, do you think? January 1st or February 1st or?
Yeah, I mean, it would be-
I don't think we could go much later than February.
Yeah.
Depends on what the lead time is going to be.
The lead, what, do you remember, Mike? It was-
Twelve to 15, something like that.
Yeah. For the, if you went with the larger one.
Four months. And then a quarter or so, up to three days to change-
Yeah. Make a selection.
And the smaller units were low, were less lead time. So, you know.
It's time to-
But that's, you know, there's three months there, so you're right. You can't drag it for too long. So, before I say anymore, I know you want to hear from-
He's pretty much stated what, what I was going to say. We have been discussing it. Well, it's okay. That's fine. You talk better than I do. But, no, I agree with basically everything you laid out. The extra time will be good. That way, we're not going to get rushed into it. We actually have a chance to try to analyze, because we've had quite a bit of discussion on which way to go. And there's pluses on both sides. There's also negatives, but-
When does Casella expect to come back with their new numbers? Do you know? Can you hear it?
I was just talking with the chairman about that. We haven't heard back from them. We thought it would be by now, but it hasn't been.
So, so one question that I have is not so much related to the actual physical, the equipment and whatnot, but it's the service. These two choices we're looking at, one is a full service, and one is not a full service. One, we would have to take up-
Staffing.
Well, yes. We would, we would be responsible for maintaining the equipment. We would also be responsible for being on-site every, every hour that the, that the facility is open, to make sure that only Essex residents are using the facility. So, in, in looking at this, clearly, you have, don't you have to not simply look at the costs of the, of the bids that are being put out there, but the cost to us internally of taking on this added responsibility?
We've been, we've been discussing that. We realize ones get personnel issues-
Right.
That'll be, have to be dragged in-house. We'll have to line up whatever contractors are necessary, because I don't believe we've got the qualifications to do a lot of the repairs that may be there.
I mean, it's, I think everyone who goes to the dump now sees what's going on, and we just don't want that to happen anymore. We don't want somebody else's truck to drive up and, and-
And the other part of that is, is it, does the town of Essex want to be in the business of owning trash compactors and maintaining trash compactors? Or do we want to find someone who, who would do that for us, for whatever that fee happens to be?
So, Brendan's update, it mentions that the town would be responsible for keeping all equipment running, et cetera, during the extension period. Is that, would that continue beyond the extension period?
That's what I was going to comment on. So, Guy, you're right, there's, there are other options, and Wesley was saying different things are being weighed, but I think in the six months where we're being given the opportunity to have the extension, you do it, you get through it. If we have to do stop-gack measures to keep that stuff running-
No, no, I get it.
And it gives us the time to actually vet-
I wasn't so much looking at the six months. I was looking at the, the final solution.
Yep. I, yes, I agree. So, yeah, Peter, we-
We just don't want to end up continuing on what we're, you know-
And this is going to give us more time to fully vet that. And Peter, yeah, I mean, we, we would have to find a way to keep things moving, but we already know that the company that works for Covanta right now to do maintenance is available to us.
Okay.
McGuire Equipment. And so, if we, if something happens and we need to repair something, they'll come in and do it. They'll make it work. Worst-case scenario, we do open containers with Commonwealth, and we haul those for a little while until we get the fix. You know, one big thing is going to be the November town meeting and getting the money, and then figuring out when you're going to actually pull the trigger on getting some of those, that equipment. I know you had a comment.
I, I was just going to say that this entire conversation was had, so that Commonwealth and McGuire are on the same page, that if we need maintenance, they pretty much committed to doing it immediately.
Three different contracts.
Three different contracts, three different companies, all committed to getting us through to June 30th.
Plus, a dedicated person at the transfer station, too.
No, that's us. So, what we're basically talking about is an in-kind contract where nothing will change except we get a six-month extension with an increased tipping rate. And our staff will stay staffing it. We're on our own for maintenance, and that gives us more time to vet what the most appropriate equipment is. I agree. I was wondering the same thing. We're going to appropriate funds to replace equipment, but we're not sure what we're replacing. What are we doing? So I think we need more time to discuss that.
Just get enough for the big one.
Just get enough for the big one, and then we take it from there.
Yep.
So it sounds like, I think we're all on the same page. It makes sense to vote to accept Covanta's offer for a six-month-
One other thing. Excuse me. So, the other, so there's two things that are going to happen on January 1st. One, the tipping fee goes up, and two, my understanding is from these six people, is that we're going to pay-as-you-throw. Is that still correct? Probably by February 1st, but you want this to phase in?
I don't think we've gotten that far as to when to start yet. It depends. I don't know. If we're going to keep things status quo, we could probably just leave it status quo and then have them buy another six-month sticker.
At a higher price.
At a higher price.
And at town meeting, there's an article for what you're going to set that at. We are prepared to, if you wanted to, get something kicked off for February 1st, because remember, the sticker right now goes through January 31st. We're prepared to do the math on this contract, go to town meeting with a high limit for what the Board of Public Works has to work with, and it can be less than that, for a small bag and a large bag, and put that in place. But we have to start now if Waste Zero is going to be ready to have bags at the merchants, et cetera. If you don't want to do that, I'm not suggesting that you have to, but if you want, if you're expecting it to start February 1, I need to know that tonight. That's what I'm telling you.
I think we should defer pay-as-you-throw versus the, the typical system until the next fiscal year.
July 1.
Bring that up, bring that at town meeting. Spring town meeting.
There's not a real consensus among the three of us on how we want to progress yet, at least, that I've seen. We've talked about it quite a bit.
I, I think that we have enough time, and with an extension from Covanta, it gives us time to vet all options. I think if we're going to just do an in-kind replacement at this moment for six months, we should leave everything as is with an increased rate for the sticker.
This is going to be hard enough as it is.
Right, which will need-
Which, 30%.
But we have to, we have two more weeks to figure out what that transfer station sticker cost is going to be, if we already know we're not going to go to pay-as-you-throw. So it gives us time to do some math on that. That's easy enough to do.
So let me ask another question. We're, we're talking about a Covanta and Commonwealth and McGuire, three contracts, and then that's versus Casella, single contract.
Four contracts, because our recycler is dynamic.
But that'll be the same regardless.
They're already there.
Yeah. So with those three contracts, do we know that that's cheaper than Casella, or at least the first version?
Yes, most definitely.
Yeah, okay.
Without, without even, yeah. It is.
Okay.
And I think it's important to note, I don't know that we really have good numbers from Casella, do we? I mean-
We're waiting for the next one.
And, and so-
We have the first round, right?
Whatever it is they threw at us, right. So, I, I think the deal we've got in front of us right now is the best deal that we have right now. It's, it's kind of a no-brainer to take it for the next six months.
And that doesn't rule out Casella.
It doesn't.
Casella could be a player on July 1st. So could Covanta.
Well, and, and I think it would be fantastic if we had more than just Casella and Covanta interested in, in this work, for, for whatever that's worth.
As long as it's opened up again after the six-
Sure.
We, we reached out directly to the seven major haulers in our area. We got through, we got three, well, I'll say two, right? We got, the, the one company was going to do it, but they said, we're not big enough. We don't want to start that yet. We got Casella, they're end-to-end, but they're a larger company, and the price is higher. We've gotten the extension from Covanta, but then there were several other major companies who wouldn't even call us back. And, and I should mention, too, this, we're actually in a great position where you can actually call a company and keep calling them and keep working with them until you get some numbers out of them, because this whole process is exempt from Chapter 30B. It's not like you put out one request for bids, and if you get no one, you're stuck. That's not how solid waste works, and that's, that's advantageous. And now we have six more months to, to really make some more calls and see what we can get out of people.
Good.
This is a contract, so it's only the Board of Selectmen that has to vote, correct?
It's only the Board of Selectmen.
So I will entertain a motion to accept the six-month extension from Covanta, bringing us to June 30th of 2023 for our waste contract con-
Just one thing. And I would recommend that be, has amended, and the amendment will be that Covanta recognizes that there was already an amendment number one, and so the language will change to say this is the Second Amendment, also subject to review by Town Council.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all.
Thanks, guys.
We'll continue to forge ahead. Ed, do you have a comment?
Yes, quickly. I'm pleased to hear that we're going to try to maintain the system that we've already had in place as far as the transfer station versus picking up in the curb side, because I, you know, the rural nature of Essex. You drive through Beverly and Wenham on Fridays, and the cans and the paper and stuff is blowing all over the place. So I'm very pleased to hear that we're going to dodge that moment. What I don't understand is, we've had a funding mechanism in place for all these years that I don't think anybody really has complained about, other than insisting that it be set at the town meeting. And it's been managed. People, I've never heard anybody complaining about the services, other than the elimination of the swap shop. So, I would just like to caution against the pay-per-bag deal. Yes, there are certain inequities that some people are going to pay more for a sticker compared to somebody that, well, they're going to pay the same, but they're going to have less contribution of waste. But once they pay for that, you know it's going in the hopper. It's not going to Rocky Hill Road or Island Road or someplace, because people feel, well, if I don't put this in the bag, I don't have to pay for it. So, I, you know, and just so you know, this doesn't affect me at all. I've had a dumpster since they told us that commercially you couldn't have it. So I'm paying about $95 a month for a two-yard dumpster to be dumped twice in the month. So it's not going to affect me, but I just don't, I wouldn't want to see something that's going to change the character of the town over a system that was had to modify. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, just for the Board of Public Works, I had some of the same concerns as we move forward, now that we have a little bit of an extension since, in some time with recycling. I started thinking about this pay-as-you-throw, and thinking to myself, if people have to pay per bag, now they're going to take their trash and put it into cardboard boxes and throw the cardboard boxes in recycling. So if we don't educate them on how to recycle, appropriate ways to recycle, they're going to be shoving them in metal cans and jars and boxes, so-
Recycling will take a lot of the brunt of the trash that people-
Right. So, to Ed's point, now that we have an extension, and basically we have another eight months to, well, not really eight months to discuss it, but if we're going to be increasing the cost of a transfer station sticker anyway, maybe we figure out what that cost is going to be, roll it all into one, have a more expensive sticker with better management and enforcement, and we-
I think that's an important point, is enforcement, right? When we talk about-
That's a loss.
-what people are throwing into the dumpster at the end of the day, right? You probably throw one barrel a day, or one barrel a week into the dumpster. I throw about a barrel a week into the dumpster, but there's some people who are up there with-
My wife wastes an awful lot of food.
Three or four pickup trucks-
Right.
-full of stuff-
Exactly.
-every week. And that's where we run into an issue, right?
Correct.
And so, you know, what is the answer to that? I don't, I don't have an answer for you at the moment. And I, and I don't envy the person who has to stand at the dumpster and say to somebody, oh, no, you know, you can't be, you can't be throwing that in here. But I, I, I agree, right? I mean, to, to really maintain the way that we've done it, and, and a reasonable cost to do it the way that we've done it, is to actually have to enforce what we're throwing in the dumpster, and, and- And is there a good way to do that? I don't know. So.
And the other thing I wanted to mention, Madam Chair, is I think it'd be great if the two boards could set a date to talk about this again fairly soon. Because otherwise, we're going to, you know, it's going to be March, it's going to be April, and we're going to be saying, "Oh, remember that?" There's a lot of complexities to be worked out, so I recommend that we come up with some kind of a, something on the calendar.
Maybe after town meeting?
Sure.
You know, after we know what the votes are?
Second meeting in November?
Yeah.
Sure, but just think of, I mean, that's actually six weeks away. It's kind of, you know.
But we won't know much before that, will we? Yeah. Maybe we will, maybe we'll have Casella's.
Well, we're expecting something. We're expecting information from Casella. Why don't we see what those numbers look like? We had committed to setting up another virtual conversation with Casella when we heard back with the numbers. Why don't we set that meeting, Brendan, myself, Paul, Mike, Mandy, we'll do the call, see what that looks like, tell them that we've signed a contract for an extension, and then we'll come, then we'll set a time. Because I would like to do it before town meeting, or special meeting, if we can.
Which is our next meeting, right?
Town meeting's November 14th. Your next meeting's October 24th.
So we have one before.
Yes, now, it's going to be important to understand, we're going to have to do the math right away here, right? Because there's still going to need to be a vote of the town meeting as to what the max sticker fee should be. We're not going to pay as you throw, so it'll just be a new sticker fee, okay?
In the cost.
For five months.
In the cost for the temporary improvements, for the permanent improvements.
Yeah, yeah, but we pretty much have those, the math on what we think we're going to use for tonnage and everything. We need to do all that and get it to everyone, which we will do. So you have a chance to look at it and then agree on what's going to be read in that motion. So you have the backup to it and you understand what the number represents.
Does the sticker fee have to go to town meeting?
Yes, it used to be that it could only be approved at an annual town meeting. At annual this year, it was changed so that it could be approved at any town meeting, but it still has to go to town meeting.
That's going to be part of at least one of the motions.
And it is. We have an article on it, but we have to know what's behind that and we have to have a number that we can all explain.
I was going to suggest that we have another joint meeting after town meeting once we see what we've got to play with. But in that case, we really need at least a short meeting ahead of time to try to come up with.
Yeah, just so everybody can see the math and understand it and agree, disagree, whatever.
Okay.
I'm good with that. It's a lot easier to be prepped before you stand up in front of town meeting.
Well, we closed the warrant on that on X. So we're going to have to communicate in an email to finalize this number.
The number's going to be in the motion.
Okay.
You don't need to worry about the fee being in the article. It'll be in the motion.
Okay.
So you have all the way until 13th of November. But I didn't say that.
It'd be nice for whomever has to stand up there.
At least you don't have to hold a hearing on everything.
To be able to actually explain, you know, where that's all going.
Brendan, which budget is the repairs coming out of?
The repairs and new equipment?
Yes.
General free cash.
Does anyone have any questions? Comments? No?
Not at this time.
Thank you all so much for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask our Town Administrator to start with the Town Administrator's report, please.
All right. So the first thing on my report has to do with our preparation for the Strategic Plan Revision Public Forum, and that happens to be this week, October 6th, which is Thursday night at 7:00. It's an all-virtual forum. Myself and Chairman Perrine, as well as the Chairman of the Strategic Planning Committee, Anne Cameron, and the Town Planner, Dana Menon, got together, we put together a PowerPoint that will take people from the old plan or the expiring plan into what the revised plan is talking about. And it will try to give people an idea of how that transition is happening. We think we have a good game plan set up. I don't know if anyone had any questions because it is going to happen this week and you won't have another chance to meet. You are posted to attend that. Okay, hearing nothing, I will move on. We had a safety committee meeting last week, and as is the case every year, our insurer, which is known as Maya, offers up to $10,000 in a grant for what's called loss control. So this is doing things in a proactive way to prevent accidents, to prevent loss, to prevent damage. We have learned that the grant this year will actually cover things related to body cameras and cruiser dash cameras. And it will also cover, I think we talked last meeting about some necessary elevator retrofit in two elevators in order to meet fire code for the elevators. It'll also cover that. And so we have until October 21 to apply for this grant. Again, it's capped at $10,000. And I'd like to explore purchasing the backup device for the body cameras that will be in Town Hall. It will connect to the public safety facility via the fiber optic connection. That will give us that redundancy in the video footage. And I'd also like to look at putting the balance of that, after we find out what the device will cost, the balance of that to help defray the cost of elevator repair. Just wanted to make sure the board was okay with that.
Any questions?
I'll entertain a motion to select purchasing backup server for body camera and eventually dash cameras for video files, as well as the, whatever remaining balance is left to upgrade the two elevators at the senior center and Town Hall.
What do you think, Brendan, that the server and the files will call, the video files?
Well, we reached out to one part of the operation that's going to be doing the body cameras, Motorola, and they're more of the hardware people and they didn't, they don't get involved on the software side. The company that is doing the software, the police department has reached out to them for a specific solution so that we understand exactly what specifications, and I'm guessing that it's going to be in the neighborhood of $3,000 or $4,000.
Okay, so not a lot.
Right, and then the balance would go to defray the elevator work.
What was the elevator, $14,000?
$12,550.
Yeah, okay.
All right, thank you. I'll, yep.
Again.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll make that application by the necessary deadline. I also had on my report the solid waste recycling services contract update. We've covered that. The 133 Essex River Bridge replacement tomorrow night and the next night with, so it's Tuesday night, Wednesday night, with Thursday night as a rain date, the main beams for the replacement bridge are going to be set at night because of the complexities of negotiating the roadway to get those things in place. Hopefully, once those are in place, there won't be other night work. They'll be working during the day to form up and pour the deck of the bridge and the sidewalks to either side. And if they get it all done before it gets cold, they can work all winter on other things.
Will they, the road will be normal during the day on the 3rd and 4th?
Yes, yes. Because if they tried to do this during the day, the road would be tied up for miles.
Yeah.
So it is going to be an inconvenience to people who live in the area because there will be noise, but it will be for two nights only. And that brings us to the revised draft fall town meeting warrant. So I've now started a very preliminary summary of monetary articles, which you'll see a note on there. Everything at the bottom of the page is just last year's numbers. We're waiting for the Town Accountant to update some of these things. But it will start to put in place the flow of how much each article might cost and which funding sources are proposed to be tapped. But let's go down through the warrant because at your next meeting, you're going to be asked to sign the warrant. That will be on the 24th. Article one is to fund and ratify the AFSMI contract. I don't think we have any other discussion on that. The next one is what we were just talking about, to establish the maximum fee. Now, I had this set up so that you could go to pay as you throw. I can just revise this so that it simply says to revise the transfer station sticker fee for the balance of fiscal year 2023, which would be for five months, because people are already paid through January 31st. And the key there is you're going to need to set it high enough to cover the month, the month of January is actually not going to be covered, so you have to set the sticker fee high enough so that that one month at the higher tipping fee is borne by the other five months. And we'll work out all that math. But again, this will not have a number in the actual article. It will say a sum of money, okay? Any questions on that one?
So just way back in the paper, how much of an increase do you anticipate?
Well, since we're at 71 and we're going to 93, you know, that's what, 22 on 70 is about a third, right?
Yeah. So that's the way to, that's the way.
And right now, the...
Six months, so.
Yeah, right now, the fees that we're charging, actually as of last fiscal year, we're paying for the entire operation. So if we do this properly, we should get through the end of the fiscal year and, you know, balance it out perfectly, and then if you go and pay as you throw on July 1, if that's what's decided, or maybe not, you're going to be setting a new fee in May for July 1, okay? Any other questions on that?
Yeah, it just struck me that someone might, at town meeting, when you see a sum of money, they might say, "Wow, how much is that going to be?"
It would be in the motion. So when the motion is actually read, it will contain a number in it, okay? Article three, I made some changes here, but given tonight's discussion where it looks like it's going to be status quo through June 30th, it doesn't seem to need anything but the change in the appropriation, right? Because even though we're bringing more money in, right now, the town budget says we can only spend X amount of money going out. We're going to have to increase that to match the total spend by the end of the fiscal year, but I think that's it. So we're talking about, since recycling isn't changing, it should just be the solid waste appropriation has to be increased to get through the end of the fiscal year. I don't think we need to talk about services. You might want to set aside a little bit more money in maintenance so that if we have to go to Maguire because something happens, we have something, you know, like $10,000 or something, and just put it in the maintenance line. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Plus the appropriation.
We'll take out services and town personnel labor.
Yep, and we'll do, we'll get your number on appropriation and we'll get you a number on maintenance.
Perfect.
The next one is the purchase of the equipment, and we're talking about two small compactors. And the reason we want two is it's much cheaper to process cardboard, just cardboard, if it's done single stream, on its own, whereas everything else can be commingled. And so we'll want a compactor for commingled and a compactor for cardboard. If you end up going pay as you throw, it's going to help because recycling's going to increase, and if you have a compactor, you'll have less hauls. So you pay once for the machine and you pay less per month for the number of hauls of recycling.
So is cardboard just less expensive to get rid of it, or do you actually sell it?
There's a better market for it, and if you can bring it into the people that recycle it as cardboard and not commingled, the process for dealing with it is set up in favor of that. And so you get a better price. If you say, "I'm going to do commingled and it's going to include cardboard," the price is higher than if you split them. You actually get a lower price on the commingled and a much lower price on the cardboard.
But you don't ever make money off of it, the cardboard?
No, you don't, but you're going to cut your costs.
Yes, yeah.
So my question on that, Beazie, is that we've been talking about the hopper or the compactor at the top of the hill, but now when we have this conversation, we talk about two small compactors for recycling. These are two totally separate issues. So we're going to make sure that we're funding replacement of the compactor, but we're not going to jump into that until we know what direction we're going.
Right, you'll get the money for it. I would recommend that you get it at the cost of the larger compactor, which we may or may not go with, but if you go with it, you have it. If you don't, then the money gets returned to the general fund.
Okay.
That's what I recommend.
Thank you.
Right, so physically, these two are going to replace the two bins that are down there.
Right, instead of just open bins, they're going to be...
Right, the...
But we're going to commingled.
Recycling.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. Article five is to get, oh, go ahead. Oh, we have an appointment, so we'll pause here.
Is Thomas Starr with us this evening? Mr. Starr, if you could take a seat at the end of the table, and there's a microphone there, and you'll need to speak somewhat closely to it.
Is it Dr. Starr?
No.
It's not, okay.
In the art departments of universities, that terminal degree is an MFA, perhaps because they value that we make things with our hands.
All right, so Master Starr.
Yeah, well, Tom is good.
Tom is good. So Mr. Starr is with us from Northeastern University to discuss linked online content with respect to the climate change science in Essex. So we had talked about this a couple of meetings ago. We were going to meet with you last meeting, and thank you so much for coming in this evening. So if you'd like to just give us a little bit of history, and then we can talk about your request to link some content.
Yeah, so you've probably, you know, seen these up around town, and, you know, I want to just reiterate my thanks to the Town of Essex for pioneering this project because Essex was the first town to adopt the project, and I've since gone on to apply for and receive a grant from Essex County Community Foundation to put these in a total of 15 Essex County towns and private land ownership organizations like the Mass Audubon and the trustees. And having them up in Essex to begin with, you know, showed the validity of the concept. So as we expanded it to other communities, we added some functionality to the website, which is, you know, accessed through the QR code on each plaque. So you really do it through your phone. And so now, all the towns that have just joined the project, they have an additional page that the Essex interactive text doesn't have. And that is that they have a button that says "more" on it that gives background to what's being said on the plaque. So in other words, in the original iteration, which is up in Essex, you can use a QR code and you get to see where, that there are five other plaques, a total of six in Essex. You get a sense of where they are and they're in a chronological order, you know, where these events are projected to occur. But what's missing, and what we have now in the other communities, is an explanation. So, you know, why does the Causeway flood, you know, whatever the case may be, why Eben Creek might need an enlarged culvert? And so that was a document that I forwarded, which had some language similar to what we've adopted in Salem and with the trustees, that tried to explain to people, give them more information, and then with links, further links, you know, in the documents, if you've seen them, that, you know, connecting to the actual science that all these are based on. And then ultimately, there's, as there is now with your, the way it functions in Essex, there's a link to the Town of Essex and their climate and resilience information so that citizens and visitors can access that information and see what, you know, what the town is doing and, you know, perhaps, you know, provide additional support. So it's kind of a public information project. You know, kind of, you know, a lot of towns have this kind of information on their websites, but the project is intended to provoke people to get interested and take a look at it, actually.
Sure, I think it's a great project. One comment I do have is that when you look at the plaque, and especially if you hit the QR code and you go to, I'm assuming to this text that you gave us.
Right.
It's kind of stark, and I think a lot of people are not going to really understand that it is... that it is in the future, maybe not at first. And I'm wondering if maybe you could put on it somewhere, a look, look into the future, climate change in Essex or something like that, so that it's very clear that this is not something that is imminent or has happened or whatever, but is just sort of a projection.
Right.
Based on, you know, scientific knowledge.
Yeah. Well, the, the, the concept of the project, you know, does kind of allow for that, but it's not right up front. So in, even in the way it's set up now, when you go to the about page, which does exist in Essex, that's, that's been part of it for every town. And you read what the project is about, at the bottom, it does state, this is a public art project intended to bring attention to climate, you know? And so it, the, the idea was not to put that up front because then some people would just say, oh, you know, art project, like, you know, that's not as compelling, you know, as.
I, I think what Peter's getting at is many people, their first experience with this is when they hit the QR code.
Yeah.
And all of a sudden, they're presented with, oh, it's 40 years later and there, there is no bridge here anymore. It's all because of this and that. So I guess my first question is how do you get, have you had, so you have this in place with some of you? So have you gotten any feedback, pushback, comment about that? And also have you gotten any comment or feedback about possibly being the, the statements that are being made and, and the pictures that are being painted are controversial?
You know, the.
And that some people might disagree with your science.
Right. The only, that's never come up in Essex County. The only time it's come up is that the project was the subject of an Associated Press and news article that was syndicated to major news organizations. So New York Times picked it up and San Francisco Chronicle, I don't think the Globe did, mostly online. And, and Fox News picked it up. And, and that was kind of the reaction from, from that audience, but nowhere else.
And so to your knowledge, none, it hasn't come back to anybody in the town as to why are you putting these things up with these crazy?
No, I think, Brendan, there was one instance where someone, I guess their cell phone didn't, you know, they might've had an older cell phone and they couldn't get to the information. And they called City Hall and there was that. But, you know, that was a few years since then.
Yeah, that was a number of years ago.
Yeah.
I haven't heard anything since.
Yeah. And, and also the problem with that is at that time, there wasn't the explanation, you know, which we still have now. We still don't have the full explanation, which I think actually makes it.
And, and do your, the, the, once you hit the QR code and you go to the page, there is sort of a disclaimer on, on the page itself, right?
Do you want to hit the QR code and see for yourself?
Boy. You're challenging me.
No, it's easy. I mean, you don't have to if you think you don't have the time for it, but you know, you do it with the, it usually works pretty, pretty easy with an iPhone anyway. And then you, so, so the thing is you would have to switch to a town that has that information. Well, no, even, even Essex has it. If you go to the about page.
So here I am.
Click about.
Okay.
And this explains the trial. But.
Which one is that?
You have to read all the way to the bottom to, to understand what it is.
So where, where would that be?
So what under this is there?
This public art installation that connects viewers' challenge.
And that even connects further to Northeastern.
Right.
And if you connect to Northeastern, then there's, you know, there's a.
I don't know if I'm making too much out of this.
Well, I guess my question for you, Tom, is would you consider this art or science?
It's actually a combination of both. It's, it's a, it's an art project in the sense that, you know, it uses a kind of time travel narrative, which is used in literature ever since H. U. Wells wrote the Time Machine right up to, you know, Back to the Future and The Avengers and things like that, as a way to, you know, make people think about the future. You know, often time travel, there's a, people want, they see some imminent problem and they, they're going to go to the past and change behavior in the past to, you know, affect the future. And, and that's kind of the conceit here that, you know, you would, if you see a date in the future, you know, and you see this terrible thing and then you say, but this isn't the future, you know, we still have 20 years until then. Oh, well, oh, maybe I could do something now. Like maybe I could, you know, find out more about what the town of Essex or the state of Massachusetts is doing. So, so that's the art part, but the art is all based on science. So everything has a link to either the, you know, originally.
Reputable, reputable.
Right.
References.
Yeah.
They're all ones that are.
Yeah. It does require, you know, in other words, it's not like a billboard or something you get like that. The idea is to make people stop and think. So, you know, not everybody wants to do that. That's fair, you know, but, and they don't have to, but.
I think it's a great, I think it's awesome.
Thanks, thanks. Yeah. And so there might be some people that are too puzzled by it to, you know, pursue it. But, you know, there are some dates that are actually in the real past, just like there are in Essex. You know, a lot of towns do have something that refers to the 2018 storm. And in, in Newburyport, we've put one up concurrent with the building, you know, the completion of a revetment that was being built in response to the 2018 storm. So that one's dated 2021, now in the past, was present, now it's in the past. So, so there are some, you know, real past events. But these things for the future, the whole idea of doing it as a historical plaque is to make people think more seriously about these scientific projections. They're not just like wild guesses about what might happen in the future, but they're.
And you would come before us in Essex anyway, every time you were changing or mending or updating.
Yeah.
Any, any of the texts that goes along here.
Right. If something, so you might have something where this, this has come up because we have some in Salem that are, you know, are predicting something's going to be finished by 2025, right? You know, right? That might not happen, right? So, so we could change it, you know? They're not, you know, they're only put on with screws and bolts in existent, and especially in Essex, they're all on existing, you know, sign poles, the perforated.
Yeah.
Poles that come off and could be replaced very easily.
I have, I think, I think it's a great idea. I like it. But I do have some comments on some of the texts.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm happy to, you know, alter things to suit you. I mean.
Like number three, you talk about negatively affecting the town's climbing economy.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's, I mean, yeah, I mean, it potentially is, but it's not a major, and that's the causeway.
That, that could easily go.
And then.
Let me just make a note of it so I, I don't miss anything that you want to.
It's the second, third to last line in the middle.
On number three, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
And then on number six, it all talks about stormwater flow. And I think there should be some mention of the, more of a mention of the, the storm surge. You've mentioned it on Main Street, but not on Apple Street. And that's a lot of what we're addressing with the work that we're doing there.
Okay. So that's great to have this clarification because I, you know, I'm working a little bit at a distance and it's easy for me to get some things, you know, skip something or something wrong. So.
Right.
So add storm surge. Is there anything on the website I could refer to?
Brendan could give you.
Yeah, we can work together on it. Because remember in the 2018 storm, when Apple Street flooded, that was because of the ocean storm surge. It wasn't because.
Right.
The culvert was, was somehow overtaxed and water was coming over the road. Water was coming from the ocean side and flooding the road towards the landwork side.
Right. Yeah. So it's just that, you know, that culvert is called out in the Great Marsh Climate Adaptation Plan. So that's, that's why it's in here, but yeah, the nuances of it.
It is accurate. I mean, it does, it does flood over top, the culvert, but it also, when that floods, saltwater gets in and floods the road from the other side as well.
Right. I understand. Yeah. No, I'm happy to clarify any of this. Believe me, it's.
I think the others are fine. I mean, if anybody else looked at them.
So my feeling, I, to be perfectly honest, I felt like this was more of an awareness project and I think they were effective in doing their job. So I was more of the mindset of just removing the signs, but since it sounds like two of the other selectmen are not in favor of that, I'm a little concerned about the links. We, the signs are there, they exist. I'm not sure that we want links that we have no control over. We're putting out information that we're not sure we necessarily agree with. So that's my biggest concern is not knowing what the content's going to be. If you want to approve the content and then make sure that we have some sort of an understanding that we get notified every time content's going to change, but when you have a QR code.
Yeah.
They have the ability to change that without our say so.
You're absolutely right, but I'm not doing that. Yeah. I mean, you know, for one thing, I've got a lot of other communities I've got to put attention to and I'd like to just bring Essex up to the same standard as the other community. But then I have no intention of going back and, you know, revising things unless you come to me and say, you know, well, that date no longer applies or something. So, you know, the, the whole idea is this is a partnership. It's not like a, you know, a, a public art project to get dropped in the middle of the town and just the way it is. I know it's sensitive and, you know, I really wanted to reflect, you know, the reality of climate change for Essex, but also, you know, your sensibility of, you know, what, what you like to communicate to the town. You know, not everybody read the Great Marsh Adaptation Plan. That's where most of it is, is from.
Right. Yeah. I don't have a problem with the language in the others or the, you know, the, all the, as I said, all the references are fairly reputable and accurate. And the town has based some of their actions on some of them.
Okay.
And things in the future, I mean, you don't know whether they're accurate.
Right.
Exactly. Yeah, right. But, but so long as we have a.
Yeah, within a reasonable range.
Partnership here and that, that any, any, any changes would be, you know, we'd be aware of.
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, if you wanted to substitute, like if there was something from the Great Marsh Plan that the town has, you know, has considered or has something about it on the website that you think supersedes what's in the Great Marsh Plan, you know, we could put that in. That would be more current, right? Because the Great Marsh Plan is getting a little old now. So, you know, that would be up to you if you feel there's, it would make it more local even and, you know, more, more to the town.
Something that we can think about at some, some point. I don't know that we want to tackle that right away.
All right. So for now, you already have the change to number three.
Yeah.
And then I can work with you on the language for Apple Street, number six. And I guess is it, the board want to take a vote on whether you'd want to do this or not?
Do we want to wait for final language and then vote? We don't have to have Mr. Starr here to take that vote as long as we approve the language at that meeting, he can go forward.
I don't know. I think Brendan will come up with something that we would agree with. I don't think we need to do that. He's just taking out a phrase, so.
So you know exactly what you want removed and Brendan will, you'll work on.
You know what you're removing.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I will entertain a motion to approve, this isn't really a contract, it's not a renewal, it's.
It's, it's just the fact that the selectmen have allowed these discs to go up and the discs are connected to, are going to be connected to content. And you're saying if, Mr. Starr, you're going to have the discs up and you have the pleasure of doing that in the town, the board is going to make sure that they have a complete understanding and control over the message. That's what this vote would be.
Yes.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Starr.
So back to the town meeting warrant. Article five is the authorization to sell various parcels out on Gregory Island that are town-owned and the town really doesn't have a defined use for, they're very small and they could be added to other parcels out there. Article six is the new stabilization fund for beautification of town areas, public areas. Article seven is, this came up at the last meeting, I've added it in, new digital radios and Essex, Essex Fire Department vehicles and apparatus. Article eight is short-term or near-term money to get some of these public areas spruced up right away. There will be an Economic Development Committee meeting before the fall town meeting and this one may or may not be ready. We'll, I'll get you more information on that. But it will be, it'll probably be on the warrant, it's just whether or not it gets read as a motion or not. Article nine is the lighting. And at the last meeting, the board indicated that in addition to the $160,000 grant, at least at this point, you're looking to have the motion talk about probably $100,000 for the, what we're calling Zone Two lighting. Article 10 is a placeholder article for the potential purchase of a parcel on Apple Street that has come up for sale and it's currently in Chapter 61A status, which would give the town a right of first refusal. I believe the board is going to talk a little bit about, more about that tonight, perhaps in executive session and perhaps in regular session. Article 11, I'm told that the Conservation Commission is not going to be ready for the fall town meeting, so that's not going to be on the warrant. Article 12 is adding to the special purpose funds that we've already created. Article 13 has to do with changing the purpose of an existing Board of Health revolving fund. 14 and 15 are for the additional funding of water and sewer department. Yeah, go ahead.
I noticed that the number changed from 30,000 to 50,000. Was that per the request of the Board of Health?
Yes. The, the number that you saw in previous drafts was just a placeholder number.
Okay.
And the Board of Health Administrator feels that if the number is elevated to 50, anything that they do in a given year will fit within that. But 30 was too low.
Okay.
Article, so 14 and 15 would be if we needed to add money to the maintenance lines for the water or sewer enterprise funds, and that would come from water or sewer enterprise fund free cash. I'm told that they may be looking for a purchase of some additional meters and parts for those meters, but I think those could possibly be part of any, a maintenance vote because it's not to re-outfit all the meters, it's just to have some spares, I think. But I'll check with, with Mike on that. Then Article 16 is for additional sewer grinder pump funding to replace more of the grinder pumps that there are, the generation one grinder pumps that we're switching over to a, a new type of pump because they're at the end of life. Then replenishing the Finance Committee's reserve fund. We know that that will include the elevator work and we think that the police department may be utilizing the reserve fund when the, the intermittent patrol officer position gets moved to a full-time union position, which is happening this fiscal year. So that will probably be replenished from there as well. The OPEB, which is retiree health insurance, is Article 18. Article 19 would be to amend any aspect of any budget, and I don't currently have anything, but we have that on there in case something comes up. And then bills from a past fiscal year, I think we have one or two. So with the removal of the conservation article, there'll be a total of 19 articles. Are there any additional questions on that?
Nope.
And that is my report.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve the weekly warrant in the amount of $319,833.25.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the selectmen September 26, 2022, open meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'm going to hold the next one till the end because I think we're going to have public comment on that. I will entertain a motion to vote to approve the retiree healthcare renewal rates for calendar year 2023.
So moved.[1772.47]
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have a request from Building Inspector Bill Sandborn to increase the Building Inspector Clerk's hourly rate from 2207 to 2457. We received a letter. My concern with this is I go back to the discussion at the last meeting where I pretty much stated my piece was that we normally do any sort of wage increases for annual town meeting on the wage and salary scale. And should we start increasing wages at any given point during the year, it brings all departments to our doorstep looking for, you know, wage increases whenever they see fit. So I see this to be a problem at this time of year and I think it should go to the Finance Committee for vetting and be approved in the same fashion that union employees have to be vetted, my own failing.
Yeah, I just want to mention that what is being asked for the wage and salary scale already allows for the range, so it wouldn't be a change to the wage and salary scale. It would be a change to what this person is being paid. But I do understand that you'd like to see that happen on a fiscal year basis through the budget process.
Right. Why did it, why is it not, has it not been righted? I mean, it appears as though in the letter that this individual is being paid at a different rate than other people.
Well, there's a range and this person's lower in the range than some other people who have maxed out in the range for the part-time clerk type of position. That's true. And is there a problem with?
Is it because, is there a union question in there?
No, these are non-union positions and this is a non-union position. And so it's coming to the selectmen because the selectmen actually manage the building inspector's budget. If it were in a different department and somebody was in the middle of the range and the department wanted to bring them up, by a vote of the appointing authority in that department, that change could be made, provided that they had ample money in the budget. In this case, there is ample money in the budget because there's usually surplus in this person's line at the end of the fiscal year. But it's a policy decision, I agree with the chairman, as to whether you want to take this action now or indicate that you perhaps be taking action for July 1st.
So I agree with Ruth.
I agree with Ruth as well.
So I think we take no action at this time. Thank you. We have a request to transfer a seasonal lease for 130 Canomo Point Road, MAP 108 Lot 65, from Thayer W. Adams Revocable Trust at 130 Canomo Point LLC to Daniel K. Mayer Trustee. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve a written request for the transfer of all interests in the leasehold for the property at 130 Canomo Point Road, MAP 108 Lot 65, from the Thayer W. Adams Revocable Trust to 130 Canomo Point LLC, Daniel K. Mayer Trustee. And further, that nothing in this approval is intended to convey or imply any right, title, or interest in the subject property or any portion thereof that was not already held by the Thayer W. Adams Revocable Trust.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 With respect to the benches at Canomo Point, you asked me to reach out to the family that would like to place the Janet Davis bench next to the Gallant bench, which was the most recent bench over by the anchor out front on Canomo Point. That family would like to do a bench and not a picnic table, which would leave the other location open for perhaps someone to do that donation. The Janet Davis bench will be exactly matched. They've talked to the people who did the Gallant bench. They're going to source and get the same bench. They're going to use the same mason to pour the pad and so they're going to just split the difference and make sure that they're equally spaced in that space. And the board now has the opportunity to talk about that one other location and whether you want to open that up for a picnic table.
I thank you to the family for being willing to work with us on that. That's fabulous that they got the same mason and the same bench. That's wonderful. So I will entertain a motion to approve the request for the Janet Davis Memorial Bench in Mooring Field G by the anchor near the Nancy Bertel Gallant Bench.
So moved. Excuse me one second, though. Didn't you actually approve that at the last meeting? So that they could, if they wanted the bench, they could do it?
It did? Okay.
Right. So you took that vote and you gave them the choice.
Option, okay. All right. So we don't need to approve that. Now the conversation will be about the other potential location, which is over by the parking lot.
The angled parking, yeah.
The angled parking, just where the ramp goes down toward the beach, there's, here, I'll circle it.
Beyond it a little bit.
Yeah. So Peter.
This is my whole, I did this years ago.
Pass that, Peter, with a blue circle.
This is Ruth, where we, the last spot that we got.
The last spot where you can go down the ramp to launch a boat, but it's that last spot where we said, well, there's a spot that could be utilized, a potential spot.
Yep.
And this is for a bench?
Or a picnic table.
From years ago. I did it.
Oh, you had already done it.
But I couldn't find it the day we were talking.
I do have it on both of these.
So I think that we could actually do a picnic table further over up in here in the bench here where you, is that where you have it? You have the bench not far off this bench.
So the problem is, Peter, with the new renovation of the seawall, if you go down there, you're going to notice that all of the plantings don't allow for it, potentially. Go take another look, let's.
Yeah, I thought there was enough grass there, I think.
Okay.
We could look, yeah, I mean, we can.
Nothing's probably going to happen until the spring.
Right.
I also have heard from the president of the association that there is interest from other parties on donating more. So once you determine what and where, I think there will be people that will do it.
Benches and picnic tables or?
I think there are numerous parties and you're only going to have limited real estate, so.
So we can at least approve another bench location, this one circle?
That potential.
Yeah.
But I think the discussion was, should we be capping this before we end up with 100 benches at Canomo Point?
Yeah, I thought we did do that. Did we not?
I think we said one or two, but we need to have a definitive because if we have.
And I think we need to have a process for how we're going to determine who gets that. If there's, if there's several, if there's several people who are interested, I mean, you know, some kind of lottery or, I don't know what. But to avoid any, you know, unpleasantness.
So is the board looking for one bench and one table or are you looking just for one thing?
Well, certainly the one bench. I don't know.
Yeah, I'd look, Ruth thinks that there.
I mean, I like the idea of a table because I think somebody would enjoy sitting in that location overlooking the beach.
Yeah. But if there's not room, I think there is, but we should look.
Yeah, let's, let's bring it back.
Yeah.
Can I have that, Peter?
Yes, sorry.
Not going to want to pass me in front of you.
All right.
Okay, so we'll bring that back.
Orders.
So on our agenda is to continue to make appointments to the Essex Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. At our last meeting, we appointed the two at-large members and since then, we've received one letter of interest from Diane Polly. She writes a lovely letter and she talks about the fact that she is a Realtor. She served on the Housing Authority. I know that I attend many meetings where she works with the Council on Aging and she does a lot of presentations for them. Her goal really is to make sure that she keeps affordable housing in Essex for the seniors. Her letter was compelling for me. I think she would be a fabulous fit and I'd like to hear what the board members have to say about appointing Diane to.
I totally agree. She seems very qualified and very passionate about the topic.
Okay.
Right, passionate, right. So how would this be as a, as an at-large?
She would be a Housing Authority member.
Yeah, larger.
Former member of the Housing Authority, the at-large are full. And you might also think about who you'll officially be appointing to as the Selectmen's representative because then you would be up to four tonight and there'd be three more.
So I will entertain a motion to appoint Diane Polly to the Affordable Housing, as an Affordable Housing trustee for a timeframe of two years as our Housing Authority member.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So since we're talking about the Affordable Housing Trust, one of the Board of Select Members that can be present or former needs to be part of the, one of the trustee members. So.
It doesn't have to be an active selectman?
So when we were originally talking with the Housing Coalition and the other members of CHAPA and Action and all of the different organizations we were meeting with, it came up time and time again that it was supposed to be the chairman, the present chairman of the Board of Selectmen as CEO of the town, but when our bylaw was approved, we didn't identify that as a requirement. We just said a present or former member of the Board of Selectmen. So because it was approved by the Attorney General's Office in that fashion, it doesn't need to be the chair. Having said that, I am actually interested to serve, so.
Okay.
But I also don't want to hog positions, so.
I was going to suggest that if none of the three of us were interested in serving, that we maybe look for somebody who was an ex-selectman that had that direction and had some experience in that direction. But certainly I think it's better to have a sitting board member on it. So if you're interested, I'll.
Yeah, I have no objection to that.
Do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to nominate Ruth to serve as the Board of Selectmen seat on the Affordable Housing Trust.
So moved.
Second.
Can you add two years?
For two years. Second.
All those in favor?
So sorry, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So that would mean the remaining three members would be all serving for one year, according to the bylaw. Now, I want to point out, Peter, it says one of the trustees shall be a member of the Board of Selectmen. The ability to have a former member is at the at-large position and those are already full.
Okay, yep. Gotcha.
So on our agenda is to review correspondence from Sarah Cushing regarding her concerns about the Apple Street project.
She was initially, I think, going to try to make it here tonight, but she mentioned that she could not. I did provide her with a response to the letter and I told her that if the board had anything else to add to that, that I would get back to her, but if not, then my response would stand.
And I was, your response was perfectly acceptable. Does anyone have anything? No? So some reminders. This Strategic Planning Committee will hold their virtual public forum regarding its draft update of the Essex strategic plan on Thursday, October 6th at 7:00 PM. Wednesday, October 12, 2022, Ripple on the Water Essex Division Cape Anne Chamber of Commerce Small Business Person of the Year Award from 5 to 7. I will be presenting that award and Selectman Bradford will be accompanying me. Friday, October 21st is the Fall 2022 Greater Cape Anne Caucus at 11:45 at the Ipswich Town Hall at 25 Green Street. Saturday, October 20, yeah, Saturday, October 22nd, Greater Cape Anne Chamber of Commerce is holding their Clam Fest between the hours of 11:00 AM and 4:00 PM within the confines of Memorial Park.
Do we have to select a selectman as a judge?
They usually reach out to us and sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. I don't know who they've got lined up this year because they've been two years off, so.
They've probably forgotten.
Yeah, I don't know.
So if they do reach out, I do not eat seafood.
I do, but I will be away. I'd love to do it if they.
Aye, do you eat seafood?
I can't make a judgment on this. No, I would not.
I wish I wasn't going away.
If they call me, I'll say, no, no one's available.
Do it.
The next regular Board of Selectmen's meeting will take place Monday, October 24, 2022 at 6:00 PM, third floor auditorium of the Town Hall at 30 Martin Street. The Essex Division Greater Cape Anne Chamber of Commerce meeting will be Wednesday, October 26th, 8:00 AM at Essex Seafood. On Wednesday, November 2, 2022, at 10:00 AM, we have the presentation of the Apple Street Roadbed Elevation Culvert Replacement Design and Permitting Project and public driving walking tour of the Essex Causeway and Apple Street project site, which leaves from the senior center at 10:30 AM. On Wednesday, November 2, 2022, at 7:00 PM, we have the virtual public forum concerning the design and permitting project to elevate a short section of Apple Street Roadbed and to replace a substandard drainage culvert with the stream crossing under the road that meets Massachusetts stream crossing standards. A reminder that ALS for ALS is going to be Saturday, November 5, 2022, between the hours of 1:00 PM and 9:00 PM within the confines of Centennial Grove. And we will be shortly going into executive session to discuss the Frye project, or parcel, rather, I apologize. But on our agenda, as you will recall, I reserved one item, which was the discussion regarding the right of first refusal to purchase BJ Frye property at 30 Apple Street. So before we move into executive session, I know that there are people here that probably are here this evening with interest in that particular topic. So is there any board discussion about that outside of executive session? No?
All I would add is that the board may want to reserve its right to come back into regular session and in fact discuss the Apple Street property after the executive session. I don't know whether that will happen, but it's important for the public to understand that you might be talking about it further.
Okay. So having said that, is there anybody on the line with us this evening, meaning via computer or cellphone, that has any public comment or discussion of the Frye property? I do want to preface this by saying that tonight it's public comment, it's not going to be a discussion or a dialogue, we're just going to absorb anything that anyone has to say. And this won't be a Q and A like we did at the last meeting because we do need to move into executive session, which can be timely. So anybody on the line with us? If you, if anybody would like to comment, I'm going to wait a moment for you to unmute yourself and just identify. Okay. It doesn't appear as if anybody wants to speak. So is there anybody in the room this evening that would like to speak? It doesn't have to be about the Frye property, it can be about any public comment, but this is your opportunity. Jan, if you want to just come to the end of the table to the microphone so that we can hear you on camera.
Good evening. Janet Carlson, 24, Apple Street. I just have a question about Article 10 at the special town meeting. If it were to fail, what happens then? What is the protocol? Does the right of first refusal, can you at that point assign that right of first refusal to Greenbelt? Does the, do you get back in touch with the developer? What happens next?
Well, the town has 120 days to exercise the right of first refusal or if it's a decision of the board to sooner terminate that right. The board can do the termination, but only town meeting can actually put up the vote to appropriate the money. So even if there was a failure of the article at the fall town meeting, and we're still within the 120 days, if the selectmen felt that it was necessary, there could actually be an additional town meeting within that time. So it's not, it's not automatic. And I can't speak for them whether they would or they wouldn't, but it's not automatic that the town's right would be foreclosed just because town meeting decided not to fund it because there would be a chance to do another attempt.
But Janet, to answer your, part of your question, I think, is what you're going at, is that Berry, let me get their names accurate, bear with me. CP Berry, Residence LLC and Novak Properties LLC have a signed purchase and sales agreement with the seller. The town has the first right of refusal. If we don't execute, if we do not take that opportunity at town meeting to appropriate the funds, it reverts right back to them. They have a signed purchase and sales agreement. They will be the next buyer.
I don't think it does unless the Board of Selectmen after town meeting decides to actually execute a document not to exercise the right. The failure of town meeting to appropriate doesn't necessarily automatically do that. That's what I was getting at.
The town doesn't buy it. They have an executed purchase and sales agreement. It doesn't go to Greenbelt.
Right, but just, because the question was if Article 10 doesn't pass, does that automatically mean the town's right of first refusal is dropped?
Okay.
And I'm saying I don't think that's the case. It would be when the selectmen decide, either the clock runs out or the selectmen decide to inform the parties in advance of the clock running out that they don't want to exercise the right.
Right. But I think, I think the point is that this right of first refusal is not transferable to any other party, correct?
That's what I was getting at.
That's correct.
You were looking to see if somebody could get in front of them as a buyer.
Sorry, sorry.
You were, you were looking to see if somebody could get in front of them as a buyer if it's not the town.
No, I understand from Greenbelt that it does happen that the town assigns its right of first refusal to Greenbelt and that there is precedent for that.
Probably prior to a purchase and sales.
That would require.
It only happens after the purchase and sale is signed, yeah.
That would require a vote of the town meeting. Any interest in property or relinquishment of a right in property. You are saying assign the right of first refusal to?
Yes.
To someone else?
To Greenbelt. I understand that that. I understand that that, that happens. So I just wanted to know, you know, what, what the town, what the town thinks about that, if it fails, what the options are, you know, because I need to hear it from you, not just from Greenbelt, obviously.
That's something I would have to research with town council, because up until now, I haven't had instruction from the board to look at assignment, so I have to leave that with the board.
Okay. Thank you, Janet.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Antonella? No. Do you have any comment?
I just had a comment about, I had sent a letter about Apple Street.
I'm just going to have you state your name and address for us? Perfect, thank you.
So my name is Deb Freelandr, and I am on 15 Lowland Farm Road. And I just, I acknowledge, they're not here anymore, but I understand the concerns for getting emergency personnel in inclement weather to, you know, the other side of Essex. And obviously, we all share that concern, but I just, I have an equal concern about the safety of the road as someone, I don't know if any of you live or on it or off of it, but I know that many of us use it all the time and are walking on it and have our kids walking on it, and it's already a pretty, there's a lot of safety concerns already. And the concern with the proposed alternative that's in place right now, the concern is it's going to bring more traffic onto the road on an everyday basis, you know, because it's, there's no controls about having people on that at any time, and not just when the fire department needs to get to people. And so bringing more traffic on that road is problematic, and it landlocks us, you know, to not use the road for recreation. So I just am asking that the board think about if there is alternative solutions than the one that's proposed that would widen it and sort of encourage that to happen. And just for full disclosure, I'm a civil engineer, I did floodplain modeling for the Army Corps of Engineers, and I just, I've looked at it, I understand the concern, and yes, with climate change in the future, it'll definitely become more severe, but it's, you know, I've only lived on the road 11 years. There's not a lot of flooding in that area, it's very rare. I know the 2018 that you discussed in your proposal, but it's not as frequent as the safety issues that come up. So that's all, I just wanted to say that I understand what you're trying to do, I understand the concerns of the fire department. I just, I just like some acknowledgement of the safety issues that we already face on that road, and if there's solutions in conjunction to dealing with the low point that can be looked at, so that that's also addressed.
And if you have suggestions for that, being an engineer, please come to the virtual forum.
I'm going to, yes.
Because our engineers will be on the line, and that would be a perfect time to transfer those ideas and thoughts.
That would be fantastic, so.
That's great.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much. I am going to take a...
I'll do a recommendation. So I recommend that the board at this time move into executive session to discuss the potential purchase of real property, and that the chairman declare that an open discussion of this matter would be detrimental to the town's negotiating position, and that the town, that the chairman declare that the board will be returning to regular session to potentially discuss that issue in regular session, and then, if not, to adjourn the meeting.
So I will entertain a motion by roll-call vote to move into executive session.
So moved.
A second?
All those in favor?
Peter Fitton, aye.
Guy Bradford, aye.
Ruth Perrine, aye. So everybody that's here with us, we will be returning to regular session up here on the third floor. There may be further discussion about the Frye property after we go and discuss it downstairs. So we are now returning back to regular session at 8:12 PM, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.